And talk about other than just updating.
Right.
Okay.
We are now back in session and moving on to the unfinished business 7A Gilchrist Park Activity Center Research Report. Do you want to start with anything before Chuck? To clarify what we're...
About, uh, a year ago? Two years ago.
Two years.
Two years ago. Oh. I was off by here. We requested the assistance of Team Punta Gorda to develop a survey, research report, talk with the community, various members of the community, all sectors of the community regarding what people might want to see in a future Gilchrist Park Activity Center. We have $75,000 in our sales tax program that we have not spent yet for conceptuals based on what might come out of this conversation. We have no dollars set aside for any construction. There's reasons for that. One, the boat club lease is not up till 2021. The bayfront lease that we have with the Y is April, runs through April 2019, can be extended for another couple of years. We can also get out of it if we have to, but all of this is contingent upon planning well ahead for when the boat club lease expires in 2021. All the way back in 2008, we had discussions about an activity center, and the idea way back then was to tear down both buildings and build a new activity center. That was the idea back then. Doesn't necessarily mean it has to be the idea today, but that was it back, all the way back to 2008. So Team Punta Gorda has done their, done their job. They have put together a very comprehensive report, and so I'd like to turn it over to them. And introduce yourself, and let's see what you have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Charlie Wally, and I am with Team Punta Gorda. Before I get started, I'd just like to say that there were some comments this morning about the report. The report, of course, is in the city council agenda where you can read it, and come this Saturday when the Team Talk newsletter comes out, there will be links to the Team Talk, to the report through the Team Talk newsletter, and also the presentation. If you don't get Team Talk, you can simply email Team Punta Gorda, and we'll put you on the, on the distribution list. Today's report is a follow-on of the update that we made in May of 2017. Our process started in the spring of 2016 when we were tasked to provide a preliminary study to collect citizen input for the areas shown, which includes the Punta Gorda Boat Club, which is owned by the members of the club, they leased the land, as Howard said, the Bayfront Center, and parking lot. It does not include the basketball courts that are adjacent to the parking lot. In January 2017, we released a survey to collect citizen input. The survey focused on three themes: the individual's current use of the existing facilities, desirable future activities to be offered onsite, and desired future facility capabilities. We received over 1,000 responses and over 800 individual comments. The comments were sincere, constructive, and demonstrated desire on the part of the community to be involved in the process. We received notes of thanks from people for simply asking for their opinion. Prior to the release of the survey, we conducted face-to-face interviews with seven of the current users of the buildings to better understand their organizations as it relates to facilities. The current stakeholder organizations have more than 1,200 members, and a combined summary of the interviews is found on page, in the appendix on page 34 of the report. In summary, the stakeholders described their mission with key words such as education, exercise, instruction, and safe boating. They are all nonprofit groups, and the members work together to fulfill their mission through volunteerism and find time to engage in fellowship. The pro forma calendar found on page 33 of the report indicates a high level of facility utilization with up to seven activities per day with three to four running concurrently. Group sizes range from very few to more than 150 for large events. Self-catered events are allowed. The facilities themselves generate little revenue. The city receives $9,600 per year from the YMCA. The Punta Gorda Boat Club and the YMCA act as landlords for the other users and collect approximately $11,000 in rents and fees, including those one-off event fees paid by private citizens for weddings, banquets, memorials, and similar activities. The combined revenues of $20,000 are used to offset the cost of operations. The regular cleaning and maintenance is a landlord responsibility. The boat basin and the docks are city-owned and maintained. There is no charge to use these facilities. The users see the site as an alternative to location to the Punta Gorda Isle Civic Association Building for those people that are unable to access that building. The two buildings on the site total 12,750 square feet. The Punta Gorda Isle Civic Association Building by comparison is a similar size, while the Isles Yacht Club Building, main building on Marion Street, is approximately 16,000 square feet. Both of these organizations also have very busy facility calendars. Looking at the other end of the extreme, there's another city-owned facility at Lashley Park known as the Community Room. That is operated by the dock master, and the size of this single room is roughly 1,500 square feet. All of the organizations expressed a strong desire to create more opportunities for young people, to participate in new programs that could be offered on the site. For adults, they expressed interest in offering programs promoting healthy lifestyles. Their vision for the specific area understudy and, and Gilchrist Park in general is for the development of a fully functioning, family-friendly park. They want to see Punta Gorda enhance its appeal as a waterfront destination for both local and visiting boaters by also including docking, mooring, and support facilities. If we look at the citizen community input, we feel that our survey accurately reflects the demographics of the community, and the results are consistent with the views of the overall community. Our respondents are engaged in the park with over 40% saying they use the park once per week or more. Some of the, some use the facilities while others transit the park while walking, jogging, or biking. 50% of our respondents do not belong to any of the current stakeholder organizations. To gauge interest in various activities, we offered 17 activities for people to check off, indicating if they would like these to be available within a new facility, and one option for a handwrite-in. They were then asked to indicate their top three preferred activities in order. Each question on the survey is reviewed in detail in the report, running from pages 13 to page 28. Some of our key takeaways and clarifications. In question four, we asked, quote, "You believe the citizens of Punta Gorda would benefit from the replacement of the building," unquote. The question of the wording, the question wording is important as we were seeking opinions about perceived benefit. We did not ask if the buildings needed to be replaced. The results to the question as asked show 58% of the respondents see an overall benefit in replacing the buildings. If we exclude the responses from the Punta Gorda Boat Club, this support rises to 66% or two, or two-thirds. A corollary question asked is if the current facilities meet the needs of the residents. Overall, 58% felt that their needs were not being met. Again, if we factor out the responses from the Punta Gorda Boat Club and the Peace River Sail and Power Squadron, two-thirds of the respondents felt that their needs were not being met. Looking at activity preferences in question six, one-half of the 2,587 responses went to one of five different categories, or five different activities. Water-related activities were a, were a top priority 40% of the time. Kayaking and canoeing were the most preferred, with 10% of the respondents placing this in their top three. Sailing followed with a response of 8%. Non-water activities identified, including picnic areas, as a popular item. We suspect that the people identifying picnic areas were looking at a whole of the Gilchrist Park and not just the area understudy, and this result, result should be treated separately. The overall number-one preferred activity is meeting rooms at 14%, with exercise programs second at 9%. 53% of the respondents agreed that the city should enhance its appeal as a boating destination, while one-third disagreed. The response here closely mirrors whether people self-identified as boaters or not in question 14. Two-thirds of the respondents self-identified as an active boater, and so you can see the relationship. A word on question nine, commercial operations. The team has always envisioned a replacement building to be primarily a community activity center, and the phrasing of our question reflects this. The question identifies commercial operations as, quote, "such as snack bars or convenience stores," unquote. Approximately 40% support this, although the strength of the support based on preferences in question six needs to be determined. We did not ask an opinion question on larger commercial operations where the commercial operation would be primary on the site. So some emerging themes, it would appear that a majority would like to see a facility with more modern capabilities and in better physical condition. Improved access to the buildings by the public at large is desired. The support for activities that not need to be located on the water was strong. These activities include meeting rooms, exercise classes, education and instruction opportunities. This could be further explored to assess the strength of the support if an activity center for these was located away from the water. These activities currently take up a lot of scheduled time and a lot of facility space. Likewise, a desire to expand the on-the-water activities was strong. With the hand-launch ramp and boat docks already in place, there is interest in advancing the water activity expansions prior to any decision on the building being taken. Some possible next steps here, we've only scratched the surface of a very complex issue. From our work, we see logical follow-on activities to enhance our understanding in key areas and help identify and shape alternative courses of action. The Boaters Alliance is working on a harbor infrastructure report that includes the area in front of Gilchrist Park. Today, the availability of quality infrastructure could be seen as a limiting factor in the creation of alternative solutions. Our work with the public was by one-way written communication. We believe the citizens would like a dialogue. Focus groups could be one way to accomplish this. As we have seen with the library, the people do want to have a chance to participate in the process. We considered costs, both operational capital, to be out of scope. These are important elements in a final plan, as are the revenues. These should be modeled along with various service levels to check the feasibility of creating a self-sustaining economic model. From our work, we know that there are multiple parties, both for-profit and not-for-profit, that would like to partner with the city. These should be systematically identified and explored. While not in our scope, we did have a cursory look at best practices around the globe and found a few communities that have done truly wonderful things with their waterfront. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to say your report is very thorough. I appreciate all the volunteer hours that went into putting this together, and really it was what we tasked you all to do, so thank you for all of that.
You're welcome.
And thank your team as well. Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
I have a comment from Vice Mayor Wine. I am remiss, I didn't read his comment on the budget presentation. He pretty much concurs with what was said here.
Okay.
I paraphrase. A big thank you to Team Punta Gorda for an excellent community service in their presentation. It is now time to begin this discussion in earnest for the long term, and your report is an excellent platform to begin.
That's it?
That's it.
Go ahead.
One thing, I think, this, this report is really good because it really shows what people are interested in. I think that because we do have at present, at least till 2019 and on, the YMCA there as well as facility at, at Lashley Park, I think that possibly some discussions with both the YMCA board as well as with planning there, that some of these programs can actually be implemented now, and that would then in turn be, be grounds to justify building the facility. I think part of it is if we fully utilize what we have at present, that's, that's one way to actually really justify this, and the city would be able to move in that manner. One other thing is that, um, this, where we see, one other thing, when it comes to looking at this, being that we've had a lot of discussion about this, we can't forget, especially talking about this facility being at Gilchrist Park, it's also in a, in a neighborhood. And part of this is that we have to look at incorporating this into a tool, a true urban park design in which not only is a center and whatever's going to go in that center be integrated into the park, but also into the neighborhood itself, which, which means, example, potential impacts like, in this case, it has a certain amount of parking space, a certain amount of traffic impact. We want to make sure anything in the future wouldn't have any other further impacts as well, and so I think it's very important that when we do this, that we don't act like this is an isolated center, but is actually part of the neighborhood itself, and so we need to, I think from this point in the city, do a lot more, I say, comprehensive planning in terms of integrating facilities into neighborhoods rather than simply things being stand-alones.
I would piggyback on that because, you know, we have, you said this is a complex issue, and you didn't touch on the big, the big picture pieces like the funding and actually what could be constructed there. I asked our building official to just give me a quick, you know, we've learned from our park designs, but it is a VE coastal high-hazard area, and with that comes very strict, very strict building constraints, which I would think would double and maybe triple the cost of what could actually be constructed, and I'm not even sure if the boat club parcel in the future would even be viable for anything. I just don't know. Financially, it would be, it would be a big burden to build something that could not only withstand the velocity zone, but the coastal high-hazard area, which has to do with all erosion and the piles, and it has to be able to withstand wave action. So those are big-ticket items that, yeah, we would like to know what people would like to see there, but in the long term, there's a lot of different factors, and I think we learned from the newer activities in the park that we have to be very conscious with what you said, and maybe we do need some extra help to figure out how to make this park work in, in a residential area, because it is a jewel, it is a gem, and, you know, there are unintended consequences for whatever we may put there. And, and, you know, we have the playground opening in another month, and we, we, you know, that's going to be a change for the neighborhood, just like the recent change with, with the parking and the curb and gutter and people not being able to park in the park. So I think it's undergoing a lot of changes. I don't know that I can make any decisions at this point. I know we did put the money in the 1%. This was a, a hot topic for the 1% sales tax committee, but there's, there wasn't, you know, without knowing this is a long-term project and without knowing what the costs are and what the situation will be, there was sentiment to put some money toward a design, and I don't even think we're there yet. So, let me answer you.
Yeah, I would agree with what's been said. I looked at the report, read it, I thought Team did a great job, because I know my concern initially was, we put $75,000 in the budget to design something, but what is it we're designing? And what purpose do we want it to serve? And as I read what the residents, or all of the people who responded, what was going through my mind is that some of these things may be fitting for use on a waterfront, and some of these aren't. The use of some space, people may be using this, this space because it's space available, because that's one of the, the problems we've had in our community is, is available space, meeting space. So some of the long-term questions may be what's fitting for use at that area in Gilchrist Park as opposed to what was suggested perhaps was repurposing the old library, the current library, or what may be suitable for building something on West Henry that might be a combined community center that could be, I've heard, in the past, we've heard PGICA say we're, you know, we need more space, and some residents have, have suggested that perhaps we need a community combined area that people could meet. So it might be that there are more needs evolving in our community that, beyond what is just the Gilchrist Park, and it might be more fitted for someplace else. So it's, it's, I agree. It's not a question we can answer today, but we need more, more research and more time to, to figure this out. It's, because it's, it's, it's a puzzle that we need to put together.
I think also we, with this, we need to do the financials in terms of it being viable. Like, for example, this new playground, the downtown moms took care of that. This, this was something they paid for, and so to some degree, we have to think about this actually paying for itself as well, and that's...
Yeah. Well, the one thing I also forgot to mention is, we can have an appetite for all of this, but how are we going to operationalize it? Who's going to manage it? Who's going to run this? We don't have a Parks and Recreation Department, so we can't staff something because we, we just don't have that capability unless residents want us to increase the taxes to be able to accommodate them. I haven't heard that yet. I've heard appetite for things, but I haven't heard people say, increase my taxes to pay for it. So that's a question that yet, is yet to be seen. And I know that, you know, I appreciate the YMCA operating the Bayfront Center, but some of those things really, do you have to have yoga classes and things on the water? I mean, it's nice. It's, it's absolutely nice, and the view is lovely, but do you have to have it there? So those are just...
And we, it hasn't always been smooth sailing with the Y either. I mean, they're in better shape now than they were, but there were times where, you know, that was even on the brink of, of falling through. So anytime you have an offsite, we learned that with, you know, lease and a management, you have to be really careful about how you go about that, and you basically need backup plans to be in place at times. I don't know that we, maybe we do need to explore, because I know I've talked to a couple of people that are in the Homeowners Association, the newly-formed Historic Homeowners Association. Maybe we do need some kind of planning expertise to at least give us some ideas and be able to really, really show us what could be built there, because if, if it is a building on piles, it's directly going to affect those neighbors there. I mean, we have to be even careful about what, what can actually physically be built there that would not affect that neighborhood in the, if I see a building on piles, it's going to be right out, you know, definitely take away their view shed. So I think we really need to see all of the pieces of the puzzle, like you said, and, and really move forward from there, but this is a long-term deal. We realize that, and we just can't get ahead of ourselves.
We have dollars in the sales tax to bring somebody on board to help us conceptualize this.
I think that would be a, a really good use of those dollars.
I do too.
And I would also like to suggest we include PGICA. I would include the Burnt Store Isles Homeowners Association as well, because I know if, if we're going to look at any kind of additional community space and, and looking at something long-term, it could be someplace where multiple homeowners associations could have activities and participate in things, not just PGICA, so that it could be really inclusive for the entire community.
And I think too, what the gentleman from the boat club brought up about the kayaking, that, you know, it's not really, we, and we heard that. We heard when we put the, the hand, the hand ramp in there that we need to break water now. Like, we need to know all of that stuff going in. Like, if it's not conducive to kayaking, we need to, we really need to think about that and know that before we decide, you know, to go, to go in that direction.
And thinking about not having the problems Sarah Sutter had in terms of derelict boats and...
Yes, and we have plenty of boats out there right now, so I, they're, we're attracting those people without doing anything. So I think we should look at what options we have to get a planning expert on board and get all, get all of the homeowners, anybody that wants to be a part of it...
Any of the homeowners associations.
Be, you know, give some input. I really do think, you know, to get this long-term conversation started now would be a, would be a good idea.
We will put a scope of work together, send out an RFP, and see what we get back.
And just to put this out there, we've already decided to improve the basketball courts.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So that, that, that is not, I mean, if we're going to pay to improve the courts, we definitely want to preserve, we've already decided we want to preserve those basketball courts in their current location.
They're used a lot.
Yes, they are. Yes.
And scope-wise, and someone whose expertise in urban park planning, in particular, not just a planner...
Why don't, why don't you help him out with that?
I will help him out with that.
Okay. So I will help him out with finding the right person and scope of work.
We will, we'll have you get together with urban design and procurement and put a RFP together.
That would be great.
I would also like to see somehow that operationalizing it is a...
Yes.
...a part of the, the recommendation, because it's, that's a big, huge piece of this, that we can come up with this grandiose plan, but, you know, it's not just paying for the, the physical structure, but it's who's going to manage it? And what's, what kind of cost will there be to that? And that's all part of this, the whole equation, so...
Well, that's important. We've, we've had a philosophy here for God knows how many years now, where we don't just add departments, we just don't add staff just to add staff. We've been, if we can find somebody on the outside to manage for us, that's been our philosophy.
Right. Yes.
I mean, it still needs to be explored, especially if we're going to get this extra set of eyes to give us some, and they can look at, you know, like what Team did and look in other places and see what's been successful in other places, and, you know, we have former, former council members go visit other sailing centers and see what they do in other places. Not that that's exactly the waterfront that we have, but just to see what's out there, I think is really important, to vet all of that out and, and, you know, let, let the, the good stuff rise to the top. So thank you so much, and this will definitely be useful for when we do bring somebody in, and Team and all the homeowners associations will be a part of it, and anybody else who wants to give input will find a way to, to get it, to capture it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have new business. First, we have the Isles Yacht Club pickleball request for organized play.
The Isles Yacht Club came to us with a request that they would like to, we misinterpreted their request at first. They would like to, thought they were going to hold a, a tournament advertised like other tournaments, put it on our weekly report, and ask for people all, all over the area to, to come and play a, a pickleball tournament to benefit the leukemia society. And as a staff, we told them that the folks who are playing pickleball now have shied away from any further tournaments because of the issues with the impact on the neighborhood. And so we told them that if that's what your intent is, well, we can present it to council, but you're going to have some issues there. Well, that's not really what they're doing. There still may be issues there, but that's not really what they're doing. So would you like to explain it?
Lisa Hannan, zoning official for the record. The way it was explained to us in the meeting with Howard and Jen Dom and our executive assistant for code who handles all the events, it's actually facilitating organized play amongst the people who play on a daily basis at the pickleball courts now. They just want the ability to reserve the courts during the March 5th through the 24th in conjunction with the Isles Yacht Club Leukemia Cup events, and the play is from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and then again from, on certain dates, 5:20 PM to 8:00 PM. And they just want the ability to reserve the courts so they can help facilitate and organize play with the people who already play there. They're not, no advertising, no vendors, no anything. And we do have representative here that can answer specific questions.
I mean, my concern is that length of time, that's an awful long time. I mean, if it was like for a weekend and they wanted to do a round robin, that might be okay, but I just don't, why can't they do this without us? Like, why can't they just...
We, if, if they hadn't have come to the, come to us, we wouldn't have known about it and probably might not have even been an issue, from what I understand from an explanation, is they have little pseudo-tournaments there amongst themselves every so often, and we would never have known about it.
Those are, this is peak time for pickleball play, and, and they line up the paddles for people waiting to play. This is a public space. This is not a, a private space, and to, for us to consider anything, I, I have total respect for the Leukemia Cup. I was the drive director of propel and play in paradise when we raised a considerable amount of money to, in support of the Leukemia Cup. So, but I am opposed to any kind of activity where we are going to be restricting, and I, when I say restricting, I know that's not the intent to restrict, but this is a public space. People are going to come and play, and to have any kind of a suggestion that, that they may be asked to participate... be asked to participate and feel like they have to, obligated to participate in this, I'm just opposed to it. This is these, you know, especially, this is the peak time during the day and the evening, not alone, that it's peak during the season. So, I'm opposed to it.
I agree, Nancy. This is the peak season, and March is going to be the maximum amount of people we're ever going to see in the city on an annual basis. It is a public park, and I'm not sure that we should be asking the current pickleball players to consider participating in this tournament and not have it be an option when they're over there every single day playing on a public court, and also asking for contributions from them to do so. And I just think it's a very bad idea, and it's a bad precedent.
Okay. I'm going to defer to the organizer and let him, maybe he can answer some questions to alleviate some of the concerns.
My name is Peter Krumzik, and I live on 2002 Paul Harbor Boulevard. I am the organizer for the Pickleball Leukemia Cup, working with the Isles Yacht Club and the Leukemia Society. The idea is, was to take the existing people that play down in pickleball and try to do a fundraiser on behalf of the Leukemia Society. It is open to the people that are existing play down there. We have done organized play in the past, but what we do is we tend to do it sort of 11 to 3 timeframe in order to get the games in. The reason why I wanted to, I asked for the permit in order to be able to reserve, is that some of these people that want to play in the tournament actually have jobs in the afternoon and the evening. So, it was to allow them to participate in this fundraising tournament or organized play and be able to still get to their job in order to play the number of games that you have. Now, we've, even in organized play in the past that we've done down there, if there's other people that are not really part of the playing, we still allow some courts to be for them to use. So, it's more in terms of how many people sign up, how many people wish to play, and now it's really open to all the people that show up, even if they're only here for the month of March.
Yeah, I don't cite you for wanting to have a fundraiser. I just don't want the city to be involved in it, and I don't think we would let the tennis, somebody do that with the tennis courts. We don't let people reserve the tennis courts.
It requires city council or city manager approval to reserve the...
I've never seen one come through that I know of.
In the 12 years I've been doing events, I've never had a request for a tennis tournament, no. But it is in the event manual where it allows for that to go through the city manager or city council for special approval.
Yeah, I just think, you know, people that play there normally, they're used to what they do, and if we step in and do any kind of, "You can't play right now because of such and such," we're opening a big ball of wax.
I would also ask the question, why would you not use the Isles Yacht Club tennis courts that already exist?
Because the Isles Yacht Club is a clay court, is not a hard surface that you have down at Gilchrist. So, you wouldn't be able to really play pickleball down at the Isles Yacht Club at all.
One other option possibly is, have you looked at South County Park with the pickleball? Because that's, you can probably control the logistics of this much easier than you could, because basically, the way it sounds is that you'd have, people would have to basically, it's courts, so they'd have to agree to play within this fundraiser or not play during this time period.
We thought of South County Park, that's the only other option that we really have within Punch Court, sort of Punch Court area. They have less courts that you can use down there during that timeframe. There is no shade, there is no facilities really that people can sort of rest and get out of the area. And what they charge will really take away from what the fundraising activity is.
I would say that the South County Regional Park is actually where I would recommend. I know that the current pickleball players use that. They use it for drills, and they rent the space. So, I think that that would...
It's already set up to be able to do what you're asking, and ours is not. So, this would be the first time we would ever allow, besides a regular tournament, which we've already kind of dwindled down, I just, I don't think you're getting support for this.
I know that the Pickleplex organization has actually intentionally avoided trying to do anything at Gilchrist, and when they've held anything, they've held it and rented the courts at the South County Regional Park. So, I think that that's where this needs to go.
Yeah, the people that have rented a South County Regional Park are the Peace River Picklers, which is a separate organization that you pay dues on. So, it's a...
And the Pickleplex has also rented the space. The Pickleplex Board has also rented it. They've had a DINK tournament there, you know.
Okay. Any motions to approve? Nope, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have the event permit for the Taste de Punta Gorda, March 11, 2018, Lashley Park.
Good morning again. This Taste de Punta Gorda is the first year they are requesting to close the Harbor Walk during their event. That's why it's being brought to city council. There are a handful of events that normally do have the Harbor Walk closure that has already been approved. This is the first year they have requested it, and I don't know if the representative is still here. I know he was here earlier.
I mean, I just still can't understand why they can't put the snow fencing inside the park.
We don't require any, staff doesn't require any snow fencing in the park, period, for any of the events. They will probably come back and say it's too expensive to put the snow fencing on the inside, but that is our recommendation, is that is the option to be able to leave the Harbor Walk open. We don't see, we have no proof that this event, the cost of this event with any musical acts or anything would warrant closing the actual Harbor Walk. I do understand the availability of trying to get them as much fundraising money as possible, because they do serve the community and a lot of nonprofits. We do understand that. However, there is another option that's viable for this.
Well, if they close the Harbor Walk, they still have to get the snow fencing to do that.
But it's only, it's not the, it's one section. It's not as extensive, correct?
Well, I think if they want to protect the integrity of their boundary, then they can do that inside the park. Or not.
Staff's recommendation was no, because we have some pretty strict criteria for those few events. We're down to maybe four?
I think so.
Events that we close the Harbor Walk? Every time we close the Harbor Walk, you know what happens. So, we have very strict criteria, and as far as staff is concerned, it doesn't need it.
I'm inclined to agree with you, that probably part of our criteria or our recommendation is people, if you're going to host an event and you're going to charge, that you have to consider how you are going to control the entry into your event sans closing the Harbor Walk, because it's, it is something we get complaints about, and the more we do to enhance the Harbor Walk, the more people are going to be using it, the more we're going to subject ourselves to that kind of criticism. So, I think it's just something we need to make sure we do.
And my suggestion to them, I know, think they're here, but talk to the block party people. They have snow fencing. Talk to Smuggler's Event Management. He's got resources. Maybe they could borrow from somebody if they have the manpower to go up there and put it up. Not like they have to go purchase it themselves. I think the block party people, every time I've asked them to use something, they've let me use their stuff that they have, because the city does help them store it. So, that's a possibility, too. They could go to the block party and see what was available and borrow it for the day or the two days that they needed.
I would also add that, you know, some of the other events where we do close the Harbor Walk, there's a specific reason why we have to, like, as an example, the Wine and Jazz Festival, they have to have the exclusive use of the park and all of its boundaries, because there are actually entertainers that, in their contracts, require that there is a certain distance behind the stage for security reasons that has to be kept clear. They also have, in a couple of cases, there were a couple of entertainers that demanded that the boats even be pushed back in the harbor, further away from land, because they are concerned about security. So, there are specific reasons why events of that type, who charge a lot more money for admission, have to have those criteria. This particular event, I don't believe it does. I don't think it meets the criteria to close the Harbor Walk.
Well, we do have some other events that actually have a major outlay when it comes to music costs, the musical act costs. So, and of course, the Wine and Jazz is a significant cost.
That's a big one. The least expensive ticket's $75.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good.
Where are we going with this one?
We're going nowhere with this one.
We must be getting tired of everything.
Not supporting it.
Don't hear anybody making a motion for approval, do you?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, next, we have consideration of leash ordinance, which I will turn over to Lynn.
Oh, me? Oh. Well, if I can ever get my husband to start talking to me again, since I was on the front page of the paper today. I had an email from a citizen about two weeks ago who was concerned about a dog that runs rampant in their neighborhood, and I hadn't said anything up to that point about my own neighbor, but there's been now three reported incidents of separate, in separate places throughout PGI, where people have complained about animals running loose in the neighborhood. I found, I thought all along that we actually had a leash ordinance in place in the city and came to find out that we don't. We only have a leash ordinance in the city parks. And I am very concerned that we apparently have some citizens who are not being good citizens by allowing their dogs to roam the neighborhood or run loose down the street in the neighborhood. I have one of them. They're great neighbors, but I'm just not happy that they allow their dog to run all through the neighborhood. And the dog routinely chases rabbits and kills rabbits, and I'm very unhappy about that, too. But there's another person who sent me an email who has a neighborhood dog that runs all over the neighborhood, sits outside their houses and barks at all hours of the day and night, and chases rabbits up the gutters and all kinds of other things. I think, I know we've clarified that the animal control officer from Charlotte County will come on scene, but that's after the fact. I am concerned that we may have an incident that would require us to take much more immediate action, and I think we have to consider putting a leash ordinance in place within the city limits, because we seem to have some irresponsible citizens that are not taking care of their animals. And I think that this should be something where it would be an ordinance that would be for domestic animals that are residential pets. I think that we should also consider that it doesn't have to apply when you're in your own yard, because many people have invisible fences in their yards. But I do think it should be our duty to protect the citizens, and in the case of the one on my street, I had out-of-town guests a few weeks back, and she was out walking her dog on a leash, and this other dog came running down the street, and he's not menacing, but he presents himself like he could scare a person. And I'm very concerned about that. So, I brought this forward because I think it's our responsibility to consider putting an ordinance in place about it, before we do have an incident.
For you.
Well, I'm not going to argue against the wisdom or the legality of having provision in our code that requires all pets to be on leashes. We certainly have the legal authority to do that. And our current code does allow the city to address situations like those that have just been discussed. We have a Section 5-1, Animals as a Public Nuisance, and it makes a violation a number of different things. Number one is if the animal is repeatedly found at large. So, if, I mean, if there are problem animals, we currently can address that. I don't know what the philosophy was when this code was adopted as to why a leash prohibition or requirement was presented. Sometimes, you know, the argument would be, unless there's a problem, why add more regulations? I don't know that for a fact. That's why it was left out. You can certainly include it. We can certainly rely upon the animal control officer for the county to address animals that are problematic, or we can adopt an amendment to our ordinance that would require all animals to be on a leash. It's the prerogative of the city council.
I don't think that considering the Charlotte County Animal Control Officer as the means of correcting the problem is adequate. That's what I'm trying to say. I think that all that does is solve the problem after the fact. I think that we...
How do you not solve the problem after the fact? You're going to call PD and they're going to come?
Yes.
I mean, I think our officers have better, you know, more high priority things to do than that. I would hate to put more on them than what they have now. You know, my neighbor's dog have come into my garage, and they've come to my neighbor's house, and we just go knock on the door and say, "Please keep your dog in your yard," very sternly. I mean, to just bring an ordinance, I just don't think it's the right thing to do. I just, I have dogs. If my dog were to get out of my fence and he's running down the road and I don't even know it, now, you know, I'm going to get in trouble for the leash law? I mean, there's just so many scenarios, and I think our police department has, is better served doing other things, and that's what the animal control officers are there for. You got to call them and get a camera and show them, "Hey, look, the neighbor's dog was in my garage. You have the proof right there." And they can at least write them a warning. They don't, I mean, if they don't see it, then that's going to be hard for them. But if you have a camera and you can show them video of it, then you have something to show.
I don't have a pet, so...
But you had a pet problem. You had a dog problem.
I did have a dog problem. It was a barking dog problem, and I used animal control from the county to assist in helping us resolve the problem, because we don't have an animal control. I guess, as I listened to the discussion, what it makes me think of is where I lived for a long time before I moved Colorado, I mean, moved to Florida, was in rural Colorado, in the mountains, and we had a leash law in the mountains. You know, we weren't allowed to let dogs roam. So, to move here and find that we're in a more, in a city, and we don't have a leash law, I was really quite taken aback by that. I would just expect that to be the case, and then Charlotte County has a leash law. So, if Charlotte County has a leash law, then it's almost like, I think we need to have one.
One thing, in our case, enforcement, I think, is the issue. I don't know how we can force it outside of animal control. Our officers aren't trained for controlling dogs. So, I think ultimately, there'd be no recourse but animal control for the problem. That's only thought.
And there is a question of enforcement more from procedural legal perspective, which is not unworkable. The, believe it or not, there's actually a state statute that kind of preempts the home rule authority. I guess maybe you shouldn't be so surprised. But there is a state statute that kind of preempts our home rule authority a bit as it relates to animal control, and it requires an infrastructure, because the primary method that's provided for in the statute to deal with this is a citation method that goes directly to circuit court, excuse me, county court. So, you issue a ticket, they go to county court. Now, our primary method of enforcement of our codes is through code enforcement. Now, the statute does have language in there that doesn't preclude us from adopting an ordinance and enforcing it through code enforcement. But there's an uncertainty with respect to language of the code, not an uncertainty that can't somehow be resolved, maybe even a question to the Attorney General for an opinion, but says, "Nothing contained in this section shall prevent any county or municipality from enacting any ordinance relating to animal control or cruelty, which is identical to the provisions of this chapter or other state law, except as to penalties." So, we can't deviate from the penalty. And so, it says, "However, no county or municipal ordinance relating to animal control shall conflict with the provisions of this chapter or any other state law." So, again, do we have to abide by those provisions in this state statute that require us to enforce the violations by means of a... that require us to enforce the violations by means of a citation enforceable by county code, by county court? That's the way the county's ordinance is established. The county has the infrastructure and the procedures set forth. And that's why, you know, we can do it. We just have to create an infrastructure similar to what, what the county has to be consistent with what the requirements of state law would be. We can do it. Just need direction from the city council. And just wanted to let you know that it's, it wouldn't be easily enforceable, as many of our other codes are, by a notice of violation and process through the city's code enforcement board.
I've said what I needed to say.
Any other comments?
I guess I, as I listened to what David had to say then, does that, we wouldn't be able to have an easy solution to this. We wouldn't be able to just say, we'll use the county's infrastructure. We would have to do something on our own.
Well, the other thing to do is, is, I mean, it's not without some remedy. And that is recognizing that if the problem is dogs that are running at large, and it would be recognized, there would be recognized dogs that are creating a problem. Because there, there are some people, I'm not one of them, that is able to control their dog without a leash. But there are, there are some that can. And so, if the dog is repeatedly found at large or damages the property, those are all issues that we can address through code enforcement. Now, either the code enforcement officer would have to see the animal running at large and then determine who the owner was, and that's, we can do that. Or there have been instances where, when we're not present for a violation, and one that comes to mind is when a bird or birds that are kept as pets make noise that run af, run afoul of our code regarding excessive disturbances. Even though they may not be observed by the code enforcement officer, what we often do is let the, the citizen who is making the complaint present through recordings or videos or otherwise evidence that we can then bring to the code enforcement board, but rely primarily on the testimony of the complaining citizen. So, either way, whether it's observed by the, by the code enforcement officer or brought to the code enforcement officer by a citizen that's willing to testify, as our code is presently written, we can address the situation of, of dogs or other animals that are running at large and causing a problem. Or we can make an ordinance change that would be similar to what code the county has to be consistent with the requirements of the state statute. Or we can rely upon the code, the county's code animal control officer that our taxpayers are already paying towards to enforce the county's leash law, which is countywide. They need to recognize that there's a problem in the city and need to address the city's animals too.
And to Jaha's point, they're already trained to deal with the situations.
Well, I agree with that, that they're trained to deal with it. So, what you're saying is, though, we can actually use the county's, I mean, right now. So, I think that maybe we have in effect some type of a leash law.
We have a leash law. It's just one that's in the county's code, not the city's code.
So, let me ask you this. So, we are selectively using, applying a county code to us, whereas.
We still have running at large.
No, no. Well, no, I'm finishing your question, but I didn't want to.
Because what I'm saying is, that's a county code, and we say, well, we're a separate jurisdiction from the county. So, some things, the county commissioners may choose to enact something, and it doesn't apply to us because we are a municipality within the county itself.
Most of the county's codes apply in the unincorporated area of the county. The county does have the authority to adopt provisions that apply countywide.
Okay.
Most, as I said, most of them don't apply within the city. This one happens to be a countywide ordinance.
Okay.
Just like we found out after the hurricane, when they enacted their state of emergency, it took control over us too. So, sometimes that does happen. But I think we're covered. So, I think you need to call animal control and report your neighbor, unfortunately.